Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Today is May 1st, 2019. This is the public hearing portion of the budget. I am Mayor Mike Budwick. Going to read the ground rules, and then we will open up to the Board of Education presentation, then the Town Manager, and then we will open up for a public question. See me?
No, I don't care. We're starting with Fred Zewick.
Okay, yes, we can rise for Fred Zewick. He's a good point.
Fred Zewick, to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic of which stands one nation on the ground, individual liberty as a symbol.
Public hearing ground rules. A public hearing has been scheduled to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinion regarding the proposed annual operating budget and capital budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Rule, anyone, Board of Ed?
Do you want to run?
Here.
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 The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current Friday, April 26, 2019, Town of Enfield Legal Notice Public Hearing. The Town of Enfield shall hold a public hearing on a proposed annual operating and capital budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. On May 1st, 2019, at 7:00 PM, Enfield High School Auditorium, 1264 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, all electors and taxpayers will be provided an opportunity to express their opinions and further give written and/or oral comment regarding the proposed budget. Spotted by Suzanne O'Nicky, Town Clerk. Announcing the ground rules for the public hearing, there is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time, so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires to have one chance to speak, we shall permit those individuals to desire a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, we shall permit those individuals to desire a third, fourth, et cetera. Please refrain from personalities, and I will turn it over to the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Chris, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, to the Board Chairman Walter Frisau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent shortly, but I just wanted to bring you up to date where we are. In January, the Superintendent presented the budget to us with a 2.27 increase, and when we present, and then we voted on it, all nine of us voted in favor, passed it on to the Town Council, and when we presented it to the Town Council, we brought the number down to 0.48 percent increase. So with that said, I will pass it on to Superintendent now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to face this way, so I'll talk to you with a microphone. Can you hear me on this? Okay. So welcome, and one of the things that I've learned in my many, many years of being with this community is that this town always supports education, but a lot of times, rightfully so, you just want to know what you're paying for. So I'm going to spare all of our presentation, going to the Board of Ed back in January. Is it fading in and out?
Another one down the other side.
It's trying to get up. Okay, so there is, within your packets, or in the budget books, there is the long version of the original presentation, which was everything we've essentially done with our money last year, that ultimately built up to the budget presentation that you're going to see here. And there is a common theme this year, and we started this trend last year, and I think it's important for the community to know, and you'll hear a little bit about that, I'm sure, for the Town Manager's office, when he gets under his feet, is collaboration. We've all come with the realization that we're all in this together, so it's not necessarily us lobbying towards opposed to other departments. It's a constant question between the Town Manager's office and my office, and the term of Board of Ed and Council, that we communicate, it seems like I do, this is a player, a PMI, but it's, we all have to realize, we have so much money to go around with, and we have an obligation to make sure we give it to all of our citizens. So, there's, okay. Better to talk. Okay, you guys, you guys are seeing. So I'm going to start, and trying to give you the bridge and urgent, as we put more information in the actual book that we're using to walk in this evening. This is my presentation, as the chairman stated, I actually presented it to the Board of Ed on January 8th, and ultimately, we'll show you the timeline of all that we have today. But just to put it back, I'm going to jump just into the fiscal and tax and our budget presentation, and not go through everything that we've actually done with the budget. But this is essentially a whole work rate down from the financial picture, along with state and community, and that's our appropriate expenditure, and the type of the harm is a little bit dark to see, but the very first round is the Connecticut per people expenditure, which is $16,000 per hour. Our, our demographic reference group, that's probably what jobs, from a fiscal picture, and a lot of times, when it comes to things like test scores and other different performance measures, where are those timelines driving out? But those are a key line on the community, is that feel socially, economically, geographically. In our group, the people we have, we get compared to, it's all our comparisons of school district to each other, it's huge, it's difficult to hire. That's not a great, we are not rated, that just happens to be helpful, and we're ready to fall. And you can see the average per equal expenditure is $17,247. Then, the last year, we see this in Enfield, where our, the last school year, we're always a year behind when it comes to state reporting, we're spending $14,414. So that's the cost for every child in the position, per child, and also the taxpayer to educate that child. Just to put it, this is protected, these are all the towns that are in Enfield. You can see through the left-hand side of the graph, starts with Buchanan, and they're obviously at the higher middle market, almost $23,000 of people. And this is actually an area where you want to finish last, because it may, they're delivering the same amount of services, it's not better, in my opinion, and we knew better about. What we're doing is, is letting at least a amount of cost to the taxpayers of Enfield. So right now, last year, as of this presentation, we were third from the bottom, but it's good or bad, we're actually one, so we're likely to, we'll get, spend less, but to make sure we're still providing the highest quality education and category for our students. How we get our money, one of the things that's exceptional about our own education spending is if you look at the budget now, you'll see our incorporated budget last year was $74.2 million, that's what the Town Council incorporated to us. There's an additional nearly $4 million that we get in grants, whether they be federal grants, state grants, or private grants, grants that we apply for. So next round, it really costs us over $75 million a year to our school system, as opposed to the $71 million, $71 million maybe for a year. This is just the timeline that gets us here, obviously it starts by us in November, which is all the administrators, and we ask this to help everybody, they determine how that conversation, the GCH staff, or the clerical staff, and the builders, the Michael, what is the name? You can see January, and I present, we sit as the administrative team for a good two months, that will hear the numbers, so by now, I present something to the Board of Ed, we get that number as reasonable as we can. Ultimately, by charter, we have, we would have to send it by our numbers to the Town Manager's office, they just need the timeline, and then it answers to today's public hearing, and then the Town Council, creating a resolution that incorporates lots of the board, and the board has to go back, and it's not in line with what the board asked, or what needs necessary investments before June 30th. Well, I mentioned earlier that our administrative team starts in November, and they start putting together what their needs are, and here, this is not a long list, you know, wishes, this is what, where we need to move forward, but based on the time, how we do this. And the time is certainly one, because in November, our current school year, it's very difficult, I told Hope about that, but tomorrow, I'll try. It's very difficult in November to ask an administrator or teacher, what will you do for the following year, because they're really trying to dive back, especially in November, if it goes back to November, a small break for Thanksgiving, and if anyone's ever been in an elementary school classroom or building, you know, it's not the time to ask, or to do something else while we do. But that's how, in a nutshell, we, our first start, we're putting together everything we knew that time we needed, resulted in over $76 million request, which would have been a 6.88 percent increase. We understand that this is a tough fiscal climate in the state of Connecticut right now, and possibly in the town of Enfield right now, but we didn't mean that we're responsible to pass on to the Board of Ed. So our work began. But before we got to the work, I just wanted to honor the community, although you may be watching this eventually at home, not to relive it, or to anybody who went through last school year, and everybody can remember during the fiscal crisis of last year. The Town of Enfield was trying to make more money a dollar, and then had the opportunity to pass on all those deductions to the Board of Education, and were extremely grateful, Town Council chose that, that happened, we were... All right, I'm going to, I don't want to yell at Walter yet, so I'll keep it closer right now. If that $4 million reduction was passed along to us, that would have also come to us about January or next year. So unless it's happened, it would have been equally that enough, because we already spent that more money on that weekend there. So had that been come to us, we essentially were doing the same thing. So we're extremely grateful that the Town Council decided not to have those deductions on to us, but because of that, we actually got everybody to work with, had some discussions about how we're operating and what's forward, so we are in this position again, we know that we're not making rash decisions about things that could have lasting impact on our community. So last year, we remember, while the community used it, when the council made the decision to not sort of hold the board harmless on that large deduction that we received from the state, we also made it back to the Town Council. We know that conclusion of earlier, we're balancing our goals out for the end of the fiscal cycle, that any money that we have that go, and we actually freeze our budget for the year, and make sure that we don't have to worry about any unencumbered expenses coming up on the plate, we made a commitment that anything we save, we'll give it back to. So last year, we really committed that we would have about $100,000 left over, and it was a small slice, but it was more symbolic, the Town Council would bail us out during the time, and we actually did it, and there was a little over $125,000 that we returned back to the Town Council. I agree with that. We had some building work in August that had to get done, and the summer, the town had a full rate there, don't expect building issues, such as cleaning buildings, and some repair work needed to be done, it wasn't a problem, but because we were able to hand some of that money back to the town, and we gave some of those projects, and it's really just work here, it's like, we constantly having this conversation about how we can help each other. Part of that conversation also was, and I left this live attention, as you can see the mayor's phone on my phone, that was in my life. But one of the things that we acted with in conversations over the summertime was, when the budget process is completed, unfortunately, the state of Connecticut does this backwards ten times, but we know in January, as you all know, the state hasn't passed the budget yet. When the numbers came in, the requirement that the town had to actually give us for this fiscal year was higher than what we had registered. So at that point, we had a decision to make as a Board of Education. We can either spend it, which we guarded against, because if we spend money that we were planning on having, the question then becomes sustainability, can we continue heading back for a year? We did have the opportunity to give it back, legally, we were able to do that. We opened up a dialogue, the state of Connecticut provides for education to actually hold up to 1% of their budget from year to year. So we proposed that to the board, we had a meeting with the Board of the Council, and said, instead of us just coming out and saying, we're going to spend this extra refund of money that we have, would you permit us to carry that over from year to year, because legally, we're allowing to do that? And the Council had agreed at that point, promoting for four, for the next year, we would use that 1% reserve to offset future costs, so we give up all the percentage of budget that's a little longer this fiscal year than we might have intended, previously intended to do. We were able to do a lot of this, because a lot of work happened on end, not just in this group, but a lot of work with a lot of our staff members, the people who work for us, particularly our unions. We're able to keep our costs down, and all that, and all that wire, people, a little lower than last year that we had in previous, particularly my request. That's because our unions have stepped up, and three years ago, our unions volunteered those rules, they're making them all again. So every union, every employee who ordered education to the 0% wage, you would be voluntary. And they did that, because they knew that dark times were coming, and to do the sharing. The board will hear about insurance classification, those are admitted before, you hear about that every year. The board and the Council got together a number of years ago, when our insurance numbers were going up double digits year by year, and they formally committed, said we're able to figure out ways to control these costs better. So if you recall, last year's presentation, our numbers were actually extremely low, even if they were a little higher this year, at this point, we're hoping those numbers will continue to go down. But that's the work that these groups have done. Our fixed costs, when we presented them initially, we looked like we needed a 1.5% increase. What are the fixed costs of this for us, is just to keep the lights on, actually, just to keep everything we have, and that's what our request would be, just to keep it going from year to year. Essentially, here is the request that I've sent the board to the board. We have 1.45% fixed cost, and about $500,000, and we're calling new initiatives, 1.82%. So that was the original percentage that Mr. Frisau mentioned earlier, if I presented back in January, it was a 2.27% increase. At the time, in the beginning, we, in January, I had absolutely no retirements in our budget. So as you know, more experienced employees resign, they're usually making higher salaries, they're usually replaced with folks who have lesser salaries, I had zero bills to deal with when I did this in January. Our health insurance, our numbers are getting higher, but the whole group experienced bringing them down, we ended it on that. We had a $500,000 increase for MAGEN school tuition rates. Those are for students who are Enfield residents, who choose to attend MAGEN school, the district is charged with anywhere from $6,000 to $15,000 per student to attend outside of town. With all the discussion at the state, being the leadership changes past January, there were a lot of unknowns, and there still are some, about the future of MAGEN school funding. So the best information I had at the time was literally an additional at least $500,000 to continue to fund our students who are going outside the district for their services. And then, when it comes to special education, every year, this is called the excess cost grant, and we can be here all night, it's one minute to you, but in a nutshell, that's another number that we have sometimes worked with in dark work. That's the, that's another repercussion that's taken to us for high-class special needs students, that varies from year to year. At the time, we were very conservative in what we were going to do with that. What we know now, since January, I've got 16 retirements, with capabilities to a $480,000 savings. Those are still replacing those teachers that are retiring, but with the sound difference, we can say it was $500,000 left. You can see we have a modest decrease in our health insurance and other insurances, our general liability insurance, we're down. The big, another big error out there, obviously, is our MAGEN school tuition cost. It's January, we've got better information, as far as the rate, we've drilled down, and we'll do the same as possible, actually be for next year, so that $500,000, there's still an increase, but it's not as large, as you can see, it's about $150,000, a little more than $500,000. Our special education, our excess cost grant, that legit, you know, we're figuring, it may serve January, we've got better information, we're more comfortable to make a reduction. And the last one is we signed a new contract with Buss, or Bussman, or it hasn't been resolved, probably over four years, and we're going to experience about a $50,000 savings because of that new Bussman grant. This one, you probably can't read, but I referenced it earlier, these were the last six-year historical perspectives of what we've had. The one thing you'll notice, it's in your packets as well, as I expect your eyes to be there, is you can look at the health, the most of the percentage change that came from the super credit system. So my predecessor is probably here, and that may, if you look at the last two, a little, and I did before that, is now, sure, I'll use it again. When you get to the board, the green portion, those are what the board actually asked of the Town Council. And lastly, is the pinkish, pinkish color at the bottom, that's what the Town Council actually has incorporated into the Board of Education. So you can see, last year, we received a 2.3% increase, and if you look at the yellow, we only asked for 1.85, so that was the extra funding that I spoke about earlier. But the one thing that's consistent with the 2.27% increase, that's still lower than essentially anything the Council's actually incorporated until us over the last six years. But what's changed, I can tell you what you're going to get through the morning. We missed this slide. Okay, I'll, I'll let this here out, Walter, what is that? All these different things that I mentioned earlier, that are now going to take by having more information, that 2.27% increase is now translated into a 0.48% increase, a less than a half percent. So the board has had a conversation with the Council during our budget presentation, and we represented the new figures to the Council for consideration, and those new numbers are the same things that you're going to get in this slide, you're going to see about value adds to the district, you're still going to get that lower percentage number, based on what you, about what's changing since January, when we initially presented this. But we're going to keep all of our systems down and over, we're going to maintain all our transitional classrooms at K2, continue with the district-wide PIS program, and really enhancing our social emotional support for students, enhancing all of our marketing opportunities, and all levels, in particular with our new K and C initiative around the district. And some of you may not know this, with the building that you're sitting in, just went through this year, any SNC education visitors, our recommendations haven't come to us, they haven't come formally yet, we haven't heard that idea in a little week, that's been this budget, the budget request, is to make sure that we maintain our organization status through any SNC. And lastly, we're continuing all of our athletic opportunities for all of our students, either the high school, or middle school, our freshman program, as well as our unified support program for our special needs. And that's it. Thank you for listening. If you're interested in the very old version, it's on YouTube, it's online, it's also in your, in your book at this point. I will turn it over to the Town Manager. Thank you, Mr. Dreszek, and now, the floor. Turn it over to the Enfield Town Manager, Mr. Bronson.
Is this one working, Comey, or? Yes. Anybody hear me?
You have to talk loud.
Have to talk loud. Good evening, I'm Chris Bronson, I'm the Enfield Town Manager. I'm here to present the town budget. I'd like to thank Kasha Porcello, who's the Assistant Town Manager, and John Wilcox, the Finance Director, who worked very hard on the budget. This year, we started it probably eight, nine months ago, and worked with directors diligently and with the Town Council throughout the year, to be assessing and looking at the budget, so we didn't have to do it all in a compressed time period over a couple of weeks late at night, and I think that's worked well, and we're going to continue that going forward. Our first slide shows what the budget proposal is. It shows 2019, which was adopted, and it shows the proposed 2020. The town portion is $66,308,755, together with what Chris has just presented as the Board of Education proposed budget, $71,630,274. So the combined budget this, for 2020 will be $137,939,29. We've included the pie to show you the breakdown. It's pretty, pretty close, 51% Board of Ed, 48% on the town side, and we do appreciate the collaboration with the Board of Education and with the Superintendent. I'd just like to echo the very healthy and positive relationship we have between the two boards, and also between he and I, and as he said, we do talk on a daily basis, and it's not a comedy, calls me on the way home after that. So I think that's healthy, and I think that's what our community wants to see, because we are a partnership, and education, all the other town services, we're co-equal. Both, both commissions and both parts of the budget are equally important. So if we look at the next slide, it would appear that the combined increase is 2.85%. That's the total from the previous slide. The town side, that would represent 5.5%, and as Chris said, he brought his down to 0.48%. We thought it important to go through the town side to show, however, where the lion share of that increase on our side comes from. As he indicated to you last year, we did have a $4 million cut, and it was absorbed on the town side and town services in some very critical areas. So this year, we just really sought to restore, mostly in public safety, those cuts that we didn't think were sustainable going forward, and we broke them down. Public safety, salaries, and benefits, we had reduced the number of sworn officers in our town from 95 to 88, and we had, we had to restore that last year, and we seek to keep that number going forward. It is a number and a balance that has been worked on for probably over a decade, to see the proper number of officers to properly safeguard and police our town, and we believe it's 95. That amount, just to restore it from the previous cuts, was $1.2 million approximately. We've also increased the capital improvement plan, we'll go into that in depth, but the increase to restore a lot of things, especially in the area of vehicle replacement, was about $949,64. That's an increase to get back on our vehicle replacement plan, and for other key projects that we need to do to our infrastructure. Debt service constitutes about $158,000, and that's for the bonding for both the high school and the last roads project. And the other, also, the EMS service in the town, which had a very good equilibrium of 11 paramedics and 11 EMTs, was cut by almost four personnel last year. That resulted in a real increase in overtime, we had an increase in workman's compensation injuries, we had a decrease in response time, because we had to rely on services from outside the town to come in to augment, because we couldn't run as many ambulances, and also we lost revenue as a result of the inability to bill for those calls. We restored those positions in the budget as well, and that accounts for about $255,000. So as you can see, all of those things, which really kind of get us back to where we were before last year's budget, account for about $2.5 million. So the real increase of discretionary funding that we'll go through accounts for about $910,000. So our increase really, on the town side, is 1.5. I will just tell you that we can break down, we did public safety, the capital improvement, I'll just let you know, was primarily for light duty and heavy-duty trucks and public works, additional cameras for our joint operations center with the police department, which has been very successful, some other tank replacements, a emergency repair in Orlando Drive, where we had a washout of the sewer main, and in other areas, in addition to the EMS increases, we had 1029, they settled a contract, those were union increases for wages, which account for almost $300,000 of that, the EMS salaries were about $172,000. Health insurance actually went down because of HSAs and negotiations with the 1029 union, but that accounts for the total numbers you see on that page. What do we get from the state? The state, as you know, they're talking about it right now, but they anticipated the governors and what's come out of appropriations, what we saw today might probably be close to is a 0.8% increase from FY '19. So the total anticipated revenue from the state for next year's budget would be $32,174,605. Again, that's subject to change, but as of today, it looks like they're on schedule to hold to that prediction. Our next slide shows the FY '20 general fund overview, and what we did is, so you just break down, so you could see for these various departments, which comprise most of the town, what increases there were. General government, if you look all the way to the right, a 0.82% increase, that's general government consists of the Town Manager, the Town Clerk, Town Attorney, Human Resources, Finance, and basically, the increase there accounts for the restoration of an assistant Town Manager position, which this town has always had for decades, that was deleted, and the Town Council, I think, providently restored it this past year in Kasha, and that's primarily the increase you see reflected. Public safety, we discussed, it's a 9.6% increase for the approximately $1.2 million for the police salaries and benefits, we previously discussed. Public Works, actually, because of some implementations we did from the NOVAC consultant report, actually was reduced by 0.94%. Developmental Services, Developmental Services, this is where we have our Building Department, Economic Development, zoning, all of those areas that are very important to the, for the town, and to try to generate new taxes, expand building, attract people to the town. That's the largest increase of 17.07%. And that's the one area where we actually increased some positions to try to stimulate and increase our ability to attract people, and actually, quite frankly, raise more taxes so that we can, you know, lower taxes on people across the board. If we can do it in commercial and industrial areas by those people coming in, it bodes well on the residential side. So we added a ZEO land use analyst in the Development Services Department. Last year, we had made our ZEO from part-time to full-time, to make sure enforcement is being done. We also put in money for consulting services for, we have to do by state law, and it comes up in two years, the plan of conservation development next year, consulting services to really come in and upgrade and totally redo our zoning regulations, which, you know, after decades, you're adding this one, you make the change here and there, and pretty soon, they become almost unintelligible to our own staff and experts, let alone residents who are trying to come in and apply for something. So we thought that that was important to clean up. Intergovernmental agencies are also contained. Intergovernmental agencies are also contained in the budget. That was a small increase. That's money that we, we spend for capital region, council of governments, the Enfield Historical Society. We didn't show the actual percentage here, but that's other parts of the budget that we expend. And if you go to the next slide, you can see the other three major areas of the town government. Social services was a 4% increase. A lot of that is grant money and jobs that are associated with it. Emergency medical services is 4.9% increase, which is for the restoration of the jobs and the benefits we talked about. Library recreation was a small increase of 0.76%. IT, do you have IT up on this one? It's my back. I did at the community conversation, I turned the other way and I wasn't facing you, so this, there's no perfection, but I, I didn't know if this slide reflected. IT, it looks as though it's a rather large increase, 12.2, 12.25%. But what we did is, we consolidated all software, phones, all things that are IT and computer. They were diverse throughout all the different departments. So we put them all under IT. So their budgets went down, his increased. But he all, he also found cost savings because he's able to have looked at and get better phone and cellular services. He packaged different things. There were, in some departments, software had been let go or it wasn't efficient. And because it's now all under IT, it's going to be much more manageable, and it's going to help us save money, be more productive going forward. The next slide gives us our general fund revenue. It shows the entire pie. Basically, we get about $100 million of our entire budget from taxes. That's property and motor vehicle, and that's the blue. We talked about intergovernmental, which is, is from the state, about $32 million. And then the rest are smaller amounts, charges for services that we have, investments, real estate, income, and others, it's just about 1%. And licenses and permitting fees, about $643,000. I would just say, we've had a good report from our building department over last year, building permits and fees are up considerably. And that's a good sign of movement in economic development in the town of Enfield. This is our total capital improvement program. As I said, it increased about $900,000 plus from last year. The total that we're spending, you can see at the bottom, is about $4.5 million. That's for the assets. That's the actual value. But the cost of that is on the right, and that is what it's going to cost us to purchase or lease those assets, which is about $3.1 million. A couple of years ago, the town went to leasing packages so we could sort of smooth out the cost. There are three-year leases for, for vehicles, and then we own them after that. And the life expectancy is usually quite a few years beyond that. So they tried that, and the council wanted to continue with it. So we'll just look at the actual values and the vehicle replacement program. As I told you earlier, it includes heavy duty trucks, 10 police vehicles in the package, another ambulance remounting. We did one last year. We're doing another ambulance this year, a chassis remount, as opposed to buying an entire new ambulance, at a cost of $398,000. You can see, we're getting $1.6 million worth of value from that. Public works equipment, that basically is, we're buying new mowers to do lawns, rug cleaning equipment, snow blowers, an exterior window washer for the high school. School facilities, you can see, is 788, and all the rest pretty much are dollar for dollar now, because there's no leasing. 788,000, that's $50,000 we put in for roof report and repairs across the district. $580,000 specifically to finish Henry Barnard. We have to re-stripe the track at Enfield High School, and $150,000 for the Board of Education sinking fund. And again, the sinking funds were created in a couple of areas in the last budget, so we can put money in, accumulate it. If we don't spend it, it doesn't revert back to the general fund, so we can continue to do repairs and add to it, so long as it's under the referendum. It's not a way to get around from referendums if we spend more than 1% of our budget, which is about, requires for any one expenditure over about 100, about $600,000, we'd have to go to referendum. So we don't put more than that into a sinking fund any year. So we don't come close to that limit. As you can see, it's about $150,000. Refuse and resource management, that is basically for containment and disposal of accumulated street sweepings. Our director explained that in more detail last Saturday to the council in his presentation. The next item is town building repairs. $100,000 for general repairs, that's about what it costs a year to repair and maintain town buildings, $25,000. The roof repairs are included there. We have to replace an underground fuel tank at the police department, $75,000. Because diesel and a lot of other requirements at public works and the garage, we need a system for vehicle exhaust for them to comply with the law, that's $45,000. We have to now monitor waste oil, furnace, and other issues there. That's about $17,000. So that's what that expenditure is. Other public works, we have to put aside, we have to replace a culvert under Orlando Drive, going from the south to the north. The DEP is requiring us to make really wide improvements to make it, you know, from 7 feet to 21 feet to accommodate fish. It's over, well over $1,002, $1,003. It doubles or triples. We have a letter into the DEP to ask for relief, but right now, we're, we're putting in at least half of it. This year, it's over half a million dollars for that project. Also, a diesel exhaust fluid dispensing system, it's a little different than the other one, that's $17,000. That's all in that item. And then the town road paving, basically, that's $500,000 for ongoing repairs throughout the town, in conjunction with roads, 2015 project, $100,000 for Prac Seal program. We're replacing half of the town signs, because you can't read them at night. As you, when you go home tonight, you'll see, they don't reflect properly. We put in $35,000 to start that replacement. And we are putting $150,000 into the town infrastructure sinking fund. And then lastly, other projects, there's costs for security blinds at the child development center. There's $100,000 for the joint operations center for cameras throughout the town. That's the project the police department started. And we want to continue that. There's also a cell block intertown system for officer safety. The police department was put in when the building was constructed in 91, and it really doesn't work well. It's an officer safety issue, that's $30,000. And we're replacing the assault rifles, or patrol rifles, as they call them in our crest team, because they are now obsolete. Sure I'm on the right side. The next one should be water pollution control. The total operating cost last year was $4,335,000 and change. The capital was $1,008,000, for a total of $6 million, $6.1 million about. The proposed budget is less. The operating cost is 4.3 million. Capital is 1.1. I thought that was low, so we went back and looked. There's an adjustment that we're going to be making. There is an expense. It's within the water pollution control budget. It's not going to affect the bottom line. But it's for when we remove and go into, do the final streets for Row 2015, we also replace, replacing sewer lines. Because we've really done a finite water pollution control budget now, separate from the town budget, they didn't know exactly where to put it. It's about $500,000. We have $500,000 in the funds. We have $500,000 we're proposing as part of the project for next year. And we'll talk about that when we have our deliberations, but it's, there's, there's funding for it. So while we show, show actually a savings of 10.7%, we're a lower budget than last year in public works, it's actually, turns out to be about 2.6% lower. But we'll adjust that appropriately. We've added a few slides from the last, from the community conversation and the, when I presented to the town council, because there's still a lot of confusion about water pollution control. Maybe third time's a charm. I think we've sort of got it down, that it makes sense. And hopefully, you'll let me know later if you think it does as well. But in total, water pollution control revenues and needs. So we put this slide together, and it's a new one. We borrowed $3.5 million from the general fund over time, because we didn't have enough revenue for water pollution control. As of FY19, we've been trying to pay it back. We've paid back $150,000 of that. Think of it as a mortgage. We had a $3.5 million mortgage that water pollution control took out to the town. We paid it down by 850. They've appropriated $250,000 a year going forward to pay off the balance. And that's consistent in the budget. The revenue need, what we need to run the plan for FY19, and this is the need, this is what the cost is. We're going to generate $7.39 million. We didn't include in this the NOVAC study, which we've tried to adhere to, recommended to increase about six people at water pollution control. We're doing a, about a $36 million restoration. It's, it's going to be completed in October of '20. And they recommended new people for maintenance and other jobs. We're going to wait till we get a new superintendent and wait until the plan is complete to really assess what we think our need will be. So we haven't implemented those costs. But we need to generate, and our rate will generate the $7.3 million. That's if we collect 100% or close to it. We'll go to the next slide. How we, how do we do that? The council had many, many meetings. We have a, an entire presentation from October of last year on the manager's website you can look to. But basically, what was recommended by the consultant, and we tried to make this a standalone company, if you will, water pollution control. In 2019, and we're going to call this the base rate, there's been a lot of confusion. It's ready to use, we're going to call it from now on, there's a base charge. The consultant in 2019 recommended that that would be $30 a quarter. After a lot of public hearings, the town council implemented a $21 per quarter charge. So it was lower than what the consultants recommended. There was a second component, was the volumetric charge. And it's $3.49 and $5.24. If you go over 20,000 gallon usage a year, it goes up to the $5.24. That's what the consultants recommended, $3.49 a gallon and $5.24. The town adopted, pretty close, $3.43 and $5.13. We, fast forward to next year. What did Woodard and Kern, the consultant, recommend that we charge the 2020 budget? They recommended $36 for your base charge a quarter. And that's what we're going to recommend. They recommended, for the volumetric, for the actual usage, $3.60 and $5.39 for over that 20,000 gallons a year. We went below that. We're recommending $3.49 a gallon and $5.24. The total of that combined services for your base charge and the volumetric for 2020 would be a $16.28 a quarter increase, or a total of $65 a year for household on average. That's our recommendation. The council can look at it, they can accept it, they can lower it. Basically, our proposed, our proposed increase is $15 per quarter for the base rate and 3% for the volumetric. Total last year average for a person is, under the charges, was about $258. And our proposed would bring it to $322 a year. Again, as I said, about a $65 a year increase. So we hope that this new language will make it clear. There's a base charge in volumetric, the consultants recommended one, we went a little lower, and now we want to try to get back on track. And because there are anticipated increases by 2023, and we don't want to reach that and be so far behind that you need to really do real significant hikes that people are going to get sticker shot from. We put a slide, we included now sewer rate comparison, from high, you know, lower to higher going down. The current rate 2019, you can see where we were at, at approximately the 260 a year. And you can see where we would be about, a little higher than the middle for the proposed FY20 of $320, $320 a year. So really, options going forward, we cannot change the funding amount we need. We can stay with the current rate system and add to the base rate over time, and add to the usage over time. Or, and it's been suggested, implement a flat rate. We had our consultants come forward to tell us what that would be, an average a year. It's 360 for, per year for residential currently, and it would go up to almost 500 average in 2023. And there would be no consideration of what you actually use. And the reason the council didn't initially adopt is because they didn't think it was equitable. But that is an option that remains on the table, and Woodard and Kern can look at it again for us. But we wanted to include it, so you could see most people pay less than what a flat rate would afford them. You can see the historical mill rate. You can see the bottom line here is it, last year's mill rate in Enfield was 33.4. We are proposing a one-mill increase to 34.4. The next slide just goes over what is the mill rate. I mean, basically, one mill to 34.4 mills. On $1,000 of taxable income, that's basically 34.4 on every $1,000. The average home in Enfield is $200,000. We, we tax on 70% of the assessed value. So the average value or taxes for a $200,000 home would be $4,816, or an increase of $140 next year over this year. Okay, we put in a slide just to show comparatively where Enfield is. You recognize all of these communities. You can see where the proposed 34.4 mill rate would put us. Where we've been about, in the middle. The next slide, I think, is important. It was included in last year's budget. And we just tried to compare apples to apples. You know, it's difficult to compare us to Summers, or to Windsor Locks, or to other communities, because there's a lot of things we offer that they don't. We have, you know, the best in the top 24/7 EMS paramedic service. Others don't. They contract out. We have a very robust police service. Some have resident troopers. So what we tried to do was include, like they did last year, to show really, things we know that are very the same, where do we stand? So if you want to look, it's based on last year, it's similar, will be next year going forward. Senior center hours. You know, we're number two, only behind Windsor. Swarm police officers. And it's based on population, but you can see where we are in a population of 44,095 swarm. Library hours, only outdone by Manchester. And that's, you know, a community that probably has 10,000 people more than us. So I'd say we're, we're really ahead, but technically, we're number two. And then number of libraries, Enfield has two. And again, Manchester is significantly larger. So even though, you know, they're equal, I put us first, because I think we have a better library system than anyone. And we have a lower population and still have two. So we wanted to include that, just to do some comparisons. I'll give you some highlights, and this is, I think, important in the context. What are some of the things that Enfield has that other communities don't? We offer a lot of services. Because our pensions are funded, and you hear about this all the time, that's why the state is in trouble in other communities. Our pensions are funded at 92.8%. Doesn't get much better than that. So we're in very good fiscal shape. We've run the town conservatively for many, many decades. The fund balance, we have a very strong fund balance. And let me just get back, I, I'll talk, the pensions funded ties into the fund balance, but also just say, we have a double A stable rating with standard and course. And that's very critical when we borrow money. And because they look at everything, pension funding, they look at your fund balance, the programs in the town, your capital programs, they basically rated us almost triple A. When we, when John and I sat and had a sign for the notes for the water pollution control bonding, we got the same rate, low two, that other communities downstate in the Fairfield County area got that are triple A rated. So we got the same benefit, because overall, they, they considered us a strong economy and being run physically equal to those communities. So that's important. The fund balance is strong. I won't get into it to a large degree, but the available fund balance is 5.8 million, which is 9% of our operating, which is very healthy. We did budget use of 2.1 million for this budget. Last year, it was about the same, and it's paid back over time, but we do use that. And it's important to have a fund balance to be able to do it. We've listed some other. Honeywell, the town went to referendum, and the citizens supported a program of improvement for Honeywell. We did a presentation in the fall. We're going to do another one later in the spring. But we realized real and verified savings of over $710,000. We did lights, building lights and controls, streetlights. We broke it down. You just have the, the total, but we put $226,000 into building lights and controls, streetlights, $288,000, boilers and cooling systems, $35,000, building management, $100, water conservation, computer management. But all of that netted as $710,000. I think after we look at the costs we saved in our furnaces that were converted to propane, it would be more significant. Likewise, likewise, we got an ever-source credit. We received a 1.1, well, it was $1,660,287 rebate, rebate. It's going to be done over three years. We got it last year, we'll get it next year, we'll get it the year after. And that helps. Healthcare savings. We've been with negotiation with our unions, with HSAs, very aggressive. Per member cost went down. And you don't see that very often across the board, 1.7% in Enfield. The plan cost went down 2.1% across the board. And our wellness visits, because of a program we have with Cigna, are 6% higher than other employees. So people actually go proactively to find things out and early detection. And overall, that reduces our costs and time. We did the NOVAC study. Again, we, we paid for consultant. We've implemented many, many of their recommendations. We reclassified a deputy director in public works to one of operations, so that all the improvements we're doing, that we've done with the high school water pollution control, JFK, we'll have a system in place to maintain. control, JFK, we'll have a, a system in place to maintain and make sure we're properly repairing them, to save us money over time. Um, we've, are implementing a work order management system as one of their recommendations. We're implementing there with IT assistance. Uh, we converted 11 part-time custodian positions to three full-time positions based on their recommendation. Um, we've expanded cross-training or, uh, composing a complaint response team, and we get a lot of requests from residents. It's frustrating for us and for the council to say, well, we don't have the money, we don't have the people, we pull them out of, you know, a, a job they're doing to go address that, and it'll set us back somewhere else. So they, they recommended sort of an emergency response team, we funded that, and we're going to have it in the next year's budget. Um, so all of those things contribute to a good, a good fiscal outlook for the town. I think all of those things contribute in us saving money in the long run, being proactive, and I think it's a testament to how the Board of Education looks at their budget, how the town council looks at ours, and how collectively, um, we not, not only are trying to supply and deliver good services today, but try to reduce the tax burden on our citizens tomorrow. And I think all of these things, you've got to be keeping your eye on the ball today, but you have to be looking to the future, and I think we are doing that collaboratively. The next steps in the budget, uh, will be, the council will deliberate May 11th, uh, and then no later than May 20th, which is their second meeting in May, they will adopt the budget. So I thank you for your attention, and we're going to move down there so the board and council can come up here and hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Bronson, our town manager. Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Chris Dreszek. If the council and the board folks can move their way up. Anyone who would like to speak, we have a sign-up sheet. So please, if you're interested, sign up at our town clerk. Again, if anyone, anyone's interested in, uh, speaking, please sign up. The town clerk right down to our right, our lap to your right, she has to sign. So far, I have, we'll begin the public hearing. Thank you very much for your patience, but hopefully that presentation involved on the board side and the town was informative. And Mr. Neil Narkin, he's on the floor, sir.
Comes to the mic.
Welcome.
Con five, Clear Street. Uh, yes, that was a very informative presentation from both sides there. I kind of got enlightened a little bit and just see where everybody's coming from. Uh, I just glanced at the budget book quickly on the town side of things, and I noticed a lot of salaries on the high end of salaries seem to be increment from last year, and I'm just curious to where those amounts come from. Is that something that is like a union deal, or a, a contract rate, or a contractual type of rate? So I'm just very curious on what that's about. Uh, the other thing too is on the, on the board of ed thing, is I was never a fan, and I don't know if they're still doing it, charging students for parking, and I was never a, a fan of that, considering everything belongs to the taxpayer, and I just think that should be just removed, uh, removed from that policy. You know, expecting students to people who are least financially well-off to fund that burden there. Either everybody pays for parking, or nobody pays for parking. But I don't think anybody should pay for parking on, on town hall properties. Okay? And then, um, the other thing too is I understand there's, on the food service thing, there is some kind of a surplus in that organization there, and we all know school lunches have always been atrocious for years, us as students as one time, and, and it's never seen that improve, and, and it's been proven that it's a major deterrent on a lot of kids who don't get proper nutrition on performance, on how they perform. So my recommendation there is any, any surplus funds should be going back into the system immediately to offset better grades of food. Uh, I looked at the menus, it looks more like a fast food restaurant more than, you know, anything quality, so get something better, salad bars, you know, better, uh, better choices for the kids. So I, I think that's, that's very important, very important. Uh, breakfast should be, uh, available for those who want it, and even if those can't afford it, should be available so kids can start the day right. It'd make a big difference on the test scores. And, and, you know, just by doing those few things, I think, you know, we're all banging our heads trying to get SAT scores up, performance up, and that would, that would help them immensely. And other than that, I think that's it. So if I think anything else, maybe I'll come up again. So thanks for your attention, everybody.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thought we didn't allow him in the building. Mr. Young, go ahead, sir. And if you could, just speak in the microphone. Hey, I know we're having a little bit of technical difficulty.
Can you hear me? Yes, I can hear me.
Mr. Young? Thank you, sir.
Okay. It, it wasn't a lot of time to take a look at the budget, but I tried to do what I wanted to do. Well, I have 56 of your budget, $1,000, which says overtime. Shouldn't this be in the police department budget? That's what it is if it's still for patrols in the area, in the Thompsonville section? Looking for an answer right now, but that's what my question is. Then I go to the pension and retirement charges. In the pension municipal employ, does that million, $1,238,000 include the W, include the WPC budget too? For the same question? Because in the WPC is a budget for pension municipal. Then I go to the water pollution control area. We're proposing to get revenue of $7.2 million, um, yet our expenditures are $5.5 million. Why are we collecting so much extra? Is this the ready-to-serv, or I guess we're calling it base charge of $12 versus the present $7 a month that we're now paying? And how much of this money that we're generating in revenue for that extra $60 a year generating? How much dollars versus the, um, the usage charge? Those were my only questions for now.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else in the, I know, uh, we don't think everyone's, anyone else like to speak? Who didn't sign up? Going once? Neil? All right, sir. Yeah, go right ahead.
Previous speaker was talking about overtime and...
He can get over there.
Sorry, Neil. Can we hear me? Can we hear me now? Okay. Uh, previous speaker was talking about overtime expenses, and I'm, I'm very, sometimes I'm confused on the police side of things. Are all officers on a hourly basis, or some are salary, or how does that work? Maybe Carl would know it a little better than I would, but I'm just very curious on, on how it is, why we're incurring such high expenses on overtime.
We'll, we'll answer that question.
So that's one for later.
Yep.
And, uh, across the board too is, you know, even on public works and everything, you know, why we got what the overtime expenses we do. Seems that, seems to be hitting everybody. Is it just really understaffed, or we just, uh, for whatever reasons there? I think you got to control that. That's a lot of big chunk, and it's an unknown that's hard to budget on. Okay? So you guys think about it, let me know. Thank you.
At the end of the public hearing, actually, we'll allow, we'll open up the folks to answer a couple of those questions.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Young? Would I speak again, sir? I'm sorry, I didn't want to, but...
The water pollution control area again. On page, it says the revised budget for total capital purchases was $2.382 million. There was zero in 2019, if you look at the prior budget, and there was a million eight twelve transferred to capital. Is this a duplication, which is on page 77, I think it is? That was my other question. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak at this public hearing? Anyone else like to speak? For the third time? Going once? Going twice? All set? All set, Mr. Young? Okay, declare the public commu, uh, hearing closed. I will open up, I know Carl, uh, council and board members can speak, but I know there's a direct question on police that Carl could answer, so I'll give call.
So with respect to overtime in the police department, the department is unionized with the exception of the chief, deputy chief, and the captain positions, they don't get overtime, they get a straight salary. Everybody else gets overtime if they work over 40 hours, so that's how that works. With respect to the amount of overtime, I know it looks like a lot of money, with $650,000 or something like that. So included in that figure are not only, um, you know, backfilling shifts when people are out and things like that, but when we have a major case, um, a homicide case or a death where we call the state police major crime squad in, we incur, we don't pay the state police, but our officers have to be there on it. So when those events happen, we have to be there to cover that. And to give you just some comparison, if you were to look at the Manchester Police Department, and Manchester is a good town to compare police-wise to us, their population is about 12,000 people more, they have more officers, uh, but, you know, they're, they're almost at a million dollars for overtime. So I can tell you that in the department, when I was there and even now, um, the, the people in charge there are watching that overtime, they scrutinize it, um, if they move people to shore up shifts, they do it, but we just can't account for the, um, unexpected callouts that they get, and that's where that number comes from. With respect to the other question, uh, you had on the council of walking patrols, um, probably about, geez, six, seven years ago, we didn't have that line item at all, so out of the operating police overtime budget, we would assign officers to walk in the neighborhoods. The program is extremely successful, you ask the residents and the businesses, uh, but at the end of the year, it wasn't reflecting accurately what the town was putting into resources to fix Thompsonville. It's not just the aesthetics, it's the police protection. And the council, it's got to be six years ago now, decided to take that out and make it a separate line item so that people could look at that and know exactly what resources are you putting into Thompsonville, what is it costing? And that police overtime there is strictly for the officers to walk. Um, I will tell you that that is not enough money actually to do it year-round, so the chief is pretty judicious, and what they do is when the warm weather comes, like right now, if we ever stop the train, they'll put an officer or two, uh, they'll stagger the hours, and they'll be out there using that. We try to let that carry us till the fall, and hopefully the next year we have some money to carry over. But the, the short answer is the money's there so it can accurately be assessed, how much is the town investing in the Thompsonville village? And part of that is the police protection, which the businesses down there and the people in the senior centers love, so that's why it's, it's taken out of the police budget.
And just real quick on overtime, last year, we actually cut overtime approximately 40 to 50% across the board, where the council now has more review over approving overtime dollars. We did that specifically in last year's budget, you know, in each department. We actually were able to negotiate with our, one of our local unions to actually get, now folks working on Saturdays, so we're not paying you overtime. So it's very, it's a concern for both parties in the council, and we actually monitor it really on a, a monthly basis. We have conversations in our general government's, uh, subcommittee, and also with the town manager. So we understand your concern and people's concern about overtime, and we take it very seriously, and we kind of act like a board of finance when it comes to that. So just want to reassure you that, uh, overtime continues to be a very big concern on both parties in the town council. So again, great question. Uh, so I don't, yeah, so the question on the food or parking, I don't know, Walter or anyone? We're not...
I can answer...
Yeah, Mrs. Riley, please?
Yeah, I can answer the nutrition services question that you had.
Make sure, Carl, please, get a mic.
Can, is this better? It's done? Okay, anyway. So for nutrition services, that program runs itself, um, it has no impact on the budget, um, because they have a grant, um, from, it's a federal grant, and itself funds itself, and so that excess amount is what they reimburse the board of ed to pay for, um, yeah, in-kind services like, uh, benefits and, um, a portion of the lunch aids salaries. Um, so all of their menu things are based off of federal guidelines, and it's, it basically funds itself, and we just watch to make sure that it runs smoothly.
And the question on the student parking, I believe we did away with those?
Thirty-five.
Yeah, $35.
It used to be a hundred.
Yeah, we reduced it from 100 to 35, but it does go into an activity fund, right?
Directly into the student activity account, goes back to students here at the school.
So it goes into a student activity fund, and all the funds are used for activities here at the school. But we did reduce it from 100 to 35.
This is not the best. Did you ask about the cost of the meals as well? For the food? Okay. Because that's based on what the government gives for reimbursement for the free lunches, so they set a cost, and our cost for, that we charge our students needs to be higher than that cost of the free, unless it would look like we were subsidizing, you know, our meal service with what we're getting for federal money for free lunches.
Oh, and we do offer breakfast at our schools too. Yes.
Anyone else have, uh, Mr. Young, we'll have to get back to you on the break. I know you asked that, it's a public conversation last week between usage and base rate. I know that was your question.
How much is generated by...
Yep, we have to get back to you on that. Yep. Anyone else? Anyone else have any comments or questions or... I want to thank them.
You didn't answer my other question.
We'll have to come back to you on the water pollution. We, we couldn't hear you. I don't know if you want to come back up and, I closed the public hearing, so afterwards we'll talk. Any other questions or comments from anyone? And thank you for, everyone for coming, of course, for Neil and Mr. Young for speaking, so we appreciate it. Um, folks will be here a little bit after, you want to chat, uh, we consider you more than welcome. And thank the town manager, Chris Bronson, the superintendent of schools, Chris Dreszek, all the staff that are here, again, for your time. Um, thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone. Declare the public, public hearing closed. Motion to adjourn? Second. Favor? I couldn't hear Mr. Young.